The district is in a point we would, we will go shoot with Pacific Source to make sure that we don't pay more than sixteen point seven percent, but with the hope that if, if things go well, that we can perhaps get some money back here. I can't promise that that's what they're gonna go with, but.
I would sure like to know from the thirteen threes to twenty-one, what the insurance commission, what, what were they looking at that we weren't looking at?
The, the, the biggest difference was, um, one of the requirements is what they call a provision for adverse deviation, which is really a, a conservative factor to say if we think your expected claims are at a certain level, let's say it's a hundred dollars per employee, um, there's a requirement that says you need to add a little bit more on top of that just to be safe. Um, our standard factor for that provision is a three percent increase, which for the district is about eighty thousand dollars. The Department of Insurance came back and said three percent isn't adequate, we would like you to add eight percent to the raise, and that was the, the real driver behind it.
Madam Chair, Kelly, thanks for being here, and, and you kind of touched on the fact that a lot's been invested, you know, from staff time and your time and, and the commitment to do this and the upside of being partially self-funded. Um, is this something that you think long-term will be advantageous to be revisited in a year or two, or is it a futile effort at some point with the dollars that are basically invested but don't see any fruit? Um, cause I know not just this board this year, but previous board attempted this, and there were some deadline issues and attorney's fees and stuff, so at what point does it become an exorbitant amount to invest to a futile effort?
Yeah, great, great question. Um, I'll say the wounds are still fresh with me. My feeling is that, um, it, it's, the self-funded funding vehicle is still a great option. Um, I'm a true believer in that. Um, my personal feeling is that the, the legislative obstacles that school districts face to be able to get a self-funded plan application passed by the Department of Insurance are very onerous, and, um, we were able to get legislation changed about three years ago to make it a little bit easier, but even with that, um, it's still very onerous. Personally, my recommendation would be to look at other alternatives, um, that, you know, West Davis School District has an alternative plan where they do share some risk, but it's not a self-funded plan. Boise School District has a similar kind of program. There are certainly school districts that have those kinds of programs in agreements with their insurance carriers that are, that allow them to do some of the things that we can do with a self-funded program, not all, but without having to go through a full self-funded application and incur all those expenses. So my recommendation is probably to look at those other alternatives first before we re-try to do any kind of application of the Department of Insurance.
Madam Chair. This is the, the contract was for three years, and when we talked to the, uh, union, then we gave them the idea that for three years, you're gonna be at thirteen point three. Am I under the understanding that that's not possible now?
Hmm. I, I can't speak to that, I wasn't involved in negotiations, so, um, but I, I can't say that we revisit rates every year, so, um.
Well, we're basically at sixteen seven after this year.
Correct.
So we can assume that there's that, at least that jump.
Not necessarily. Um, are you asking if, if we can expect another sixteen point seven next year?
Yeah.
It, it depends a lot on, um, on the distribution. Yeah, and where claims come in and, uh, and the success of some of the wealth initiatives and other things that, that we do here, and, um, and, and I'd say Pacific Source has been a great partner in this. They've been, uh, very responsive, the amount of communication and responsiveness they've had over the last couple of days as we've approached them has been, has been great. So.
Bob, do you have any questions for Kelly?
No, I think it's evident what we have to do is just, we can't proceed this year.
Any other questions? Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Kelly, appreciate your time.
Okay, going back to budget items, bills. Bob, are you presenting the bills?
Yes, Madam Chairman, or Madam Chair, excuse me. Uh, the total amount of our bills for this month was, uh, five hundred and seventy thousand three hundred and eight dollars and eighty-seven cents, and I went through them today, uh, and highlighted some of the areas that I, I saw. Uh, on the first page, I noted ClassLink, and we might have to ask Ken what that's for, but it's got to be a hundred dollars for a ClassLink for license.
ClassLink is a, it's a piece of software that will do several things for us. One, it will let, uh, staff members and students reach back into the district to get hold of their folders and files that are on the network drives. It will, um, present all of the students' links to them for all the various programs that they have accounts for, um, all in one handy place, and the last thing that it will do is a single sign-on. So once they get in there and they get in their, gotten their password in, it will retain that for them, and so they'll, they only have to log into ClassLink, and then the rest of their accounts are logged in as well. Also, uh, part of it is a one roster server, which will allow us to automate all of our rostering, which is a huge load every fall.
It, it was a purchase order, and it was pursuant to the purchase order. Uh, the next thing I highlighted was, uh, Design West on engineering of both of the, uh, in the, uh, in the school, middle school roof and the suite roof. Uh, also, the next item was, uh, from Yellen Bonds Flooring, and this is for seventy-eight hundred dollars, and this was for hallway repairs at the Emmett, uh, Middle School. My call, uh, that, that was an insurance claim, and my understanding that there was a total of about twelve thousand five hundred, give or take, on the insurance claim. We have a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible. Uh, the insurance claim was for not only the middle school, there was something, a shadow feud, uh, and it was all one occurrence, so we only had one deductible. So we were gonna get ten thousand dollars back on this insurance claim.
Are we going to, or are you, um, stating it?
Are you asking the question, Bob, or are you just stating?
I'm, I'm just stating, if you ask questions, I'm just, these are the highlighted.
Okay.
Uh, Idaho Digital Learning, there's a twenty-four thousand two hundred and fifty-dollar bill there that, which included, uh, four planning stations, uh, fifty onsite training, uh, and bus support. That is for an annual fee from them. We got a bill for a part of the, uh, suite roof. Uh, we paid ninety-three thousand dollars. It looks like there's still thirty-five thousand dollars pending the completion of the job. Uh, hotspot renewals, we have a sixty-four hundred dollar, a sixty-seven hundred dollar bill there. Work comp, uh, was a hundred twenty-three thousand. That's through the state insurance fund.
Is that normal, Bob?
Well, I haven't reviewed for a complete year, so I don't know if that's normal or not. I'm assuming that that is, is what we expect. I'd have to, to share on that one. Uh, we have, uh, part of the Emmett Middle School roof. We've, uh, spent eighty-nine thousand dollars, and there's still about, uh, forty-nine thousand that is to be paid when the job's completed. And that's it. Everything else looks normal. There were purchase orders to support all the bills, and however, they look kosher to me.
Madam Chair, Bob, uh, Bob, what about this tech hut? It's, it's, is that normal activity for us?
I believe that's a, a Ken question.
What's the bill for?
Fifty-two thousand dollars.
It's mainly for the voice-over IP phone system that we're going to keep booting in. Uh, we purchased, uh, nearly four hundred phones, and there are two servers involved in there. Uh, we also purchased internet access for August and, uh, wide area network. Is that what that means, Ken, for August?
Correct. The, the last two are monthly bills. Um, we, we bought two large servers this time. We normally, we, we used to have a server in each building. Uh, we're consolidating the servers, buying larger ones and having less to maintain, which means less to license, and it'll save us about forty, fifty percent on our server costs. Um, and then the, the phone swap is, um, we're moving to a new phone system. Once we get away from CenturyLink, we'll save about, about twelve thousand here to begin with, and once we divest ourselves, all of the CenturyLink phones will save another five or six thousand on top of that as well. So huge cost savings year over year.
Okay. Thank you, Ken.
Sure.
Any other questions about the bills?
Thanks, Bob.
You need to make a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. On budget review, Cheryl.
Good evening. Um, I don't have a lot to report. I, I did enclose that in my budget, or in your, uh, work packet, and I could, you all get a chance to take it out. I'd made a few comments on there, um, with some bills, salaries and whatnot, just to kind of keep you up to date on what was going on with those. I did have, uh, I, first of all, I want to apologize for not giving you your Excel sheets this week, so the auditor's here, and it's, it's been a week, so I will, I will just finish that too, just one week, hopefully in the next couple of days, if that's okay. Um, I also want to let you know that we'll be receiving our August fifteenth payment, which is about fifty percent of the limited state revenue for the year. So we should be getting that actually tomorrow on the fifteenth. I'm guessing it'll probably be around, and I'm, it's just a wild guess, around six million, so that, that should be coming. Um, I don't really have anything else to report. You'll see that we have no, no revenue yet, and it is just, this is July, it's the first month of the year, so there's not a lot of, of activity in the budget at all. Our salaries and benefits, um, our nine-month employees, um, because of the accruals that I explained to you guys about last month, you'll see a zero for July and August, because we pull those back into June. When Cindy runs the payroll, it pulls them back into, um, this year, which zeros it out. So you'll see that in the nine-month employees for July and August. I mean, it, you'll start seeing activity next month, it, or actually this month in August, and then the twelve-month is, it starts July first, so you'll see the full activity in our twelve-months down, so, um, under salaries and benefits. Any other questions?
I, I had one, I, I just, curiosity on, on our, uh, other, um, sheet, ask the third one down. On page seven, you had a, a twenty-eight thousand dollar, is that an expenditure for Sweet? Be in the bottom half of that, page seven.
I see.
About the middle of it.
Is it the six sixty-four fund, the one hundred, the maintenance fund, six sixty-four?
Yeah, it's maintenance.
I believe that's the suite roof.
Okay.
Let me double check. I don't have a, a description there, but I'm, I'm, we had that bill, so I'm sure that's the, the bill for this.
Madam Chair, that was on last month's billings, and there was a down payment on the suite roof.
That makes sense. July's.
Yeah, Bob, you're the permanent bill reviewer. For eternity.
I made some disconnect there, I don't understand the question.
That's convenient.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Okay, moving on, action items. A, we do not have an action item out of executive session, so we'll go to B, new hires, transfers, resignations, change of general status, release from contract.
Madam Chair, you see the list of, uh, resignations, new hires and, uh, transfers? I would, I would recommend approval of our new hires.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the new hires, transfers, resignations, and retirees presented in the board packet.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on, approval or denial of bus routes, backups, and safety busing?
Okay, so the first thing we had up was route approval. That's why I brought you a book. I'll show you the, um, big sheets.
That's the way we've done it in the past. Um, I plan on all of you being here tonight and getting a share, but I'll just bring up their sheet and kind of look down. Um, yeah, previously, we've done them in this format, for those of you that, this is your first time with the route approval. When I did these last year, um, we don't have a copy machine that would copy this size of sheets, so I had to go to the coffee shop. So it's about seventy-five dollars by the time I got all the copies in.
Cause of the coloring?
Mm-hmm. And their coffee machine wasn't working really well, so by the time I got home, it started going through, and then half of them didn't work, I had to go back, so rather than go through this expense, I brought this so you can see kind of what, this is what we have at the shop that we do every summer. So everything you're looking at there, right there, is, um, for each one of those tabs, there are bus maps of what the route is, so you've got one for the morning secondary, one for the morning, uh, elementary, one for the PM, secondary one for the PM elementary, and then the notes that go coincide with that. Some of the drivers like using the maps, some of the drivers like using the notes. Everything you see there has been formatted and put together from scratch. Uh, we went back into our computers, what we have right now, and I started that formatting back in two thousand and eleven. Um, before that, we took maps from out of the phone book or wherever we could find them, blew them up big enough, and then colored them in and just put a dot where the stops were at. All of the drivers did their own notes, so they came in handwritten, um, and you've seen people's handwriting, some of them were very small, some of them you can't read, um, some computerized, some of them were on typewriters. So we developed a formatting that any of our drivers or sub-drivers can pick up and go run that route. By the color coding, you know where you need to turn, which road you need to be on, which stops are on that road. So it takes a lot of time to do these routes up. Time, we, we're talking today and figuring, all of the maps are in a Word document, all of the route notes are in an Excel document. Um, when one student moves in and you have to develop a new stop, it takes about forty-five minutes by the time you go into the route notes, because then you have to change all the numbering. Same thing with the maps. Then you have to do, we have a, a student roster of every child that rides that bus, and then go into IC, which is Infinite Campus, and, and put their information there. So it's pretty time-consuming whenever you have new stops move in or move out. Um, so we work on this all summer. We start, it's in May, having the drivers go through, update everything as much as they know these kids haven't been on all year, get everything so that June one, we start rolling everybody and getting it ready to go. So you think you get it all ready to go, and then you have the last two weeks that we've had, Brandy's just on the phone constantly with all these new ones, having to try to get these all updated. So it's getting to where it's very time-consuming to go through these, so, um, I'd like to start kind of looking and seeing what it costs. They have routing programs that I've had a couple of vendors, you know, want to give you a little, a view on it. Um, I've talked to several of the surrounding district supervisors about programs they're using, what they like, what they don't like, um, and kind of the gist I've gotten from the ones that really like their systems is they say, here's our area, these are all of our students, you put the addresses into the program, and say, we have three buses to run this area, we want to pick up as many students as we can door-side, and the, the most efficient, and it, this program's it all up, this is what we have, it has all your bus times, approximate stop times, and you print it out. So right now, we have a driver come in, take the bus out, go around the route, get an estimated, you know, we, we can kind of guesstimate, but by the time they go out and run it to try to get it, so it's, it's got a lot of time involved in it. So kind of with the growth that we're seeing, I'd like to kind of look into that and see what it would cost to go to the more automated, less time-consuming program. So with the updates that we have made this year, um, we really focused on our route revisions, trying to pick up as many students as we can door-side to reduce students crossing the street, crossing the highway. Um, also, we looked at trying to cut out any miles that we could, um, where we haven't had students for a few years, or that we had another bus possibly in the area that could swing over and pick up a road rather than the routes that we had, have been running for quite a few years. Um, our district last year had three hundred and forty-eight stoparm violations, and of those, we've only had information on twenty-four that we could actually turn into law enforcement. Um, they would like us to get the license plate number, the description of the car, the description of the driver, and fortunately, we have very attentive bus drivers who are more concerned with keeping the students safe, and it's hard to get all that information, so.
They pass the bus?
Mm-hmm, they go through the stoparm, while the stoparms are out.
Don't you have a camera?
We bought our first bus, it was going online this year with an exterior stoparm camera. Um, I had one day last year when that bus had five vehicles go through her stoparm, that we actually got stopped, we got the license plate numbers on, and it was pretty incredible when she called in on the radio, because usually they just call in and they start off with the numbers, and we grab a pen and start jotting things down, and Brandy and I were talking, and she just kept rattling these numbers and rattling these numbers, and I'm like, oh, she's finally lost it, she's just rattling numbers off, and she stopped in between the two routes, and she said, did you get all those numbers? And I'm like, were those really all stoparms? She said, yeah, they were just flying through. So I pulled her video before she went back out on her elementary run and pulled them, wrote them all down, and every single one of those numbers came back correct. When the officer came up to pick up the, the reports, he said, you, we need to get her down to train my officers, I can't even get my officers, officers to get that many right. So that's the route that we're putting the bus on with the stoparm camera.
How, how much does that cost, that, that camera?
Um, the camera itself was about four hundred dollars to add on to the exterior, and that was a new bus, so it was part of the whole program. If we go in and retrofit them, we have to foot the whole bill for it, because the state doesn't let you go in and back up that. But these were on the new bus, and so it did fall under the reimbursable category, so, um, we're gonna look at that. This is the first time we've had a, a stoparm camera, so we did elect to have the one on the outside. Since then, I've talked to a couple of supervisors, and they like the ones that are mounted actually in the bulkhead, that view out the window, because they don't have the factor of all of the, the, um, weather, snow, mud, anything that's flipping up. Your drivers have to be pretty diligent every time they stop that bus and do a walk-around, they've got to make sure that camera's cleaned off. So we're gonna see what it does, um, and maybe the next one we'll order in the bulkhead, and then see which, which type we kind of like the best, but that's one of the reasons that we're trying, we really looked at our routes this year, trying to get as many children as we can on the door side to prevent that crossover, um, so that we don't have an unfortunate accident with that. Um, so we have, we also moved a few buses on routes this year. Uh, we looked at the milers that was getting put on some of our buses, we have some pretty high-mile routes, and we have some pretty low-mile routes, and so we did a few switch-arounds of buses that were really getting a lot of miles on them that were newer buses, and maybe we had a few older buses that weren't, weren't getting the miles put on that they needed to, so we've done a few bus number changes. Um, we've got those planned out, that we will have big forms after, uh, posters at the elementary schools for our open house night, so parents know, hey, if you rode bus sixty-six last year, it's bus ten this year. So as soon as they walk up, they can see that, and then we'll have the drivers let all the kids know as they get off the bus the first few days, this is the bus you need to get back on in the afternoon before they leave the schools, this is bus, you know, ten, it used to be bus sixty-six. If you didn't ride bus sixty-six last year, you need to go find your bus. So hopefully, it won't be too confusing for the, the students.
No more Mickey Mouse.
I don't know if we have a Mickey Mouse on our buses, but.
That was always easy for me, never.
Now they want Root and some of those newer things that, that the kids know what they are. So anyway, um, for our routes today, that's what our formatting is. We've had a few changes, but they were all with the, the safety factor built in for making the routes more efficient, safer for the kids. Um, we did have a couple of subdivisions that we have routed buses through this year. We haven't had that for quite a while, but in our policy, it says we will go through the bus, through a subdivision to expedite the route or safety. Um, I don't know if any of you happen to travel down Substation in the mornings or in the afternoons when we have the secondary loads. We had two, two stops on Substation that had anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-three kids at those stops. Um, the one at Harvest Alley was really bad, because they widened that road out so far, and you're required to stay in the center of the lane with the bus, so this, the bus would stop with the stoparm out, and then you have a whole, two lanes practically between you and the sidewalk. The kids were lining up all the way back down to the corner and coming from every which direction to get out there. So we have elected to come through, uh, East Quill Run, through that subdivision and come back out, pick all the kids up in the subdivision, so they're not standing out in Substation anymore. And same thing on the other side at the Felton Peak, we're gonna go in there, pick up the kids, and then come back out. We had about nineteen kids on that side, and they're growing. So safety factor first to expedite the route, so we have, we have had those changes come in. Um, one change that we had talked about, um, I had talked about superintendent, about, previous superintendent, about a change in the suite area. We had been traveling all the way up to the top of Timberbute and back down for two students, and with that being a dirt road all the way up and all the way down for two kids, um, we elected to reroute that route up there and do the in-loop process for those parents to bring those students down to the bus stop. So those letters will be going out tomorrow. So, any other questions on routes?
You're amazing.
Brandy's been doing a great job.
Yeah, this is, this is very time-consuming.
It is. It takes, especially like I said, with all the changes, with all the new kids coming in, every time you add one, you got to go through and re-number everything, so it does take time. And we try to keep them up, up to date as we possibly can, so if that route driver happens to not come in, and we got to put somebody on them that hasn't had a chance to run it, you want to have them as updated as you can so they're not missing students.
How do they have the book in their bus? Do they flip the pages as they're driving and?
They take them, they, they have the little plastic sleeves, and they have them sticking up on a clip, and then they just look to see where they're at and.
They don't Google it?
Uh, no, they're not allowed to have their cellphones out while they're on the bus. No, that's a no-no.
That's where they can take the quick picture of the violas and our selfies.
Yeah. So, anyway, that's what we have, so we just need to have those routes approved for this year.
So you're looking for an approval?
Yes, we do have to have.
I make a motion that we approve, uh, the bus, uh, routes approved as presented by our wonderful staff.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so there's, there's one of you. The second step of this is approving the backup, um, locations. Um, the state requires that anytime we have a daily backup that we have to do, it's got to be brought, approved and in the, in, uh, the record. So right now, we have four that are currently being used daily. Um, I added the fifth one on this year because that came in during the school year last year. So the first area we have is in Montour, on Montour Gatfield Road, we've got a backup spot down there where we need to back into to get turned around, um, right there at the intersection. If they don't have to travel all the way down, they have used that. Um, farther down, uh, Montour Road at Cox Lane, they have turned around there, those were both county sites. Um, in Sweet, just across the creek, at Kirk Darnell's Post, we back in there and have a turnaround there daily. Um, in Ola, Perkins Lane and McCullough Lane, there is a backup turnaround there. Um, we had a special needs student come into the district last year that lived on the east end of Water Wheel, on the east side of Plaza, and there's nowhere to turn around if been there, you just had to pull up and then back up into the county access to get to come back down. That parent has, um, asked that her student be allowed to ride as a regular gen ed bus this year, um, so. Um, so, they're trying to get all that put through in their IUP. They're hoping this is gonna work, but I wanted to get it approved in case we have to go back to the turnaround also. So, those areas are the ones that we need to have approved, um, so that we can have that documented through our state process.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the backup routes as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
On to the third approval, which is safety busing. And that is, um, the request for safety busing, and that again is a state requirement for this month. Um, right now, you're just approving us to move forward that we do provide safety busing, and what safety busing is, is anything within a mile and a half of that school which is deemed unsafe for students to be able to walk. Um, currently, we have, um, the middle school, which we haven't had any students in that area, um, which was cleared down almost to Tyler. That's right at the end of the mile and a half. We haven't had anybody down there for the last year. Um, Ube, Carberry, Shadowbeet, Ola and Sweet all qualified for safety busing. This is our review year. So, in our policy, it lists out in there that, um, the board will appoint a committee of people that go out and actually sit, they've got a whole guideline on, um...
I've read it.
The instrument on, you go out and you count how many vehicles go through, and then you rate the each school to get it approved for the next year. And we have to have that all turned into the state by March first. So, between now and the February board meeting, we need to get our group together to go out and only assess the safety busing for this next year, so...
Do you have people that have done this in the past?
It's been a while. I know the last time that it got put through, um, there wasn't, I think, it basically got done by a couple of bus drivers that he had come out and do it, but reading in the policy and the way it's supposed to be put up, um, it's got community members, PTO people.
Yep.
And it's got to be done morning and afternoon for each location. So, you might be thinking about maybe who do you want to put together, and we can get that done before that comes through. So, right now, we're just looking for, um, the approval to put that in, and I can, and the state know that we are going to be applying for the safety busing and put those members in by March first. On our ridership report from last year, we had a hundred and thirty-seven students for safety busing at the, uh, current statewide rate after the cap per student. They, uh, had nine hundred and forty-nine dollars is what the cost of transporting a student for the year, so that would give the district back a hundred and thirty thousand and thirteen dollars that they would pay us for safety busing. But we'll be coming in July of next year for last year.
Um, Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve Supervisor Shawna Davis to move forward with, um, putting the required committee together to fulfill the state requirement for making, so that the district's eligible for the safety busing reimbursement.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you're almost done with me. Approval or denial of policy seven thirty? So, you're looking for a contract update and a policy update?
Yes. Um, what we have currently used, um, has been a bus rules. It's been a three-page contract that's been sent home. Rules, consequence, and the pages where the parents and the students all sign. This was put in to effect when Carberry and Shadowbeet were dealt. So, we've had this exact same contract for quite a while. Um, and a lot of it's pretty outdated, and so we would like to update, um, after doing lots of reviews. Um, Brandy and I spent quite a few hours on the computer checking other districts and seeing how they handle the student contract, seeing what's in there. Um, we've come up with a format that we think is gonna be a lot more up-to-date and helpful for us. Um, one of the reasons the policy is on there is because that three-page contract is completely listed out in the policy. So, as far as the policy change, um, we would like to take the policy, or the bus-riding contract itself out of the policy and have the wording put in to see the current ESD Bus Rider Safety Rules and Discipline and Eligibility Rider Contract Form put on there. So, take all that blue stuff out and then just put in there. That way, if we did have a slight change to the contract, we don't have to go back and revisit the policy and change the whole thing, because this is stuck inside the policy. Does that make sense? Um, so, just by adding, taking all the policy out and just adding in that line, it would be easier to change if we had any little changes on there. I think that one's an action item.
So, page six of six is what you're putting in?
Actually, you would take pages two through five out, and on page two, it's got a little red section there, ooh, right there. You would put that red writing in and take all that blue out, so it would greatly reduce that policy without having to have all that in there.
You have any questions for Shawna on the updated contract?
Uh, I, Madam Chair? I would make a motion to approve policy seven thirty, is that what we're, so the student bus conduct?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
In that, the first one that was on there was that contract. So, what we would like to change to is this contract, we would have one page per student instead of all the students signing the same one. So, this would have the medical information, any information that's pertinent to that child. The backside will have, um, date, contact information, and notes that the bus driver can make all the notations of any contact they've had or any incidents with that student are actually on that sheet. So, the parents will be getting one page now that just has all the bus rules. Um, we have started doing all of our, uh, discipline, the major discipline, the little things we handle, you know, just around the bus, but when it's something that needs administrative attention, we take it right to the school. So, the administrator's involvement goes right into their behavioral plans, and so we're wanting to make our plans follow more closely what the schools are actually doing, instead of having a whole different disciplinary that is really outdated.
What's an action item on this, approval on this?
Yeah, that one was an action item also.
Do you have just some problems to the point that you have to remove a student from the bus for long lengths of time?
We've had a few.
I mean, is it like a dozen a year?
Uh, no, a handful.
Okay.
There's some that go off, you know, for periods of three or four days at a time. Um, I think last year, we had three or four that were, had, was serious enough that they were off for like the rest of the school year, which would amount to, you know, four to six weeks.
Okay.
And then, yeah, with the provision that we would revisit, see how their behaviors were at school for the rest of the year, and see if they wanted being able to come back and ride the bus the following school year. So, we have four of those that I know of that were in that category.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions for Shawna on the contract update? Make a motion to approve the contract update?
I make a motion that we approve the transportation, um, safety rules and discipline update.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Good job.
Okay, moving on. E, approval or denial of partially self-funded insurance cost changes?
Madam Chair, I would suggest we postpone this until we know our exact numbers, and we may have to have a special meeting to approve that at that point.
Okay. Any questions on... Right, moving on. Approval or denial of memorandum of understanding between ESD and PERTA?
Madam Chair, you see, um, the addendum that was, uh, worked out between PERTA and Emmett School District regarding the service agreement that we, that actually last July of two thousand and nineteen. Um, this addendum just gives us a year to really research, everything will stay in effect the way it currently is for this year, so we can walk through it, but also put down there number two, during the course of the nineteen-twenty school year, ESD and PERTA shall collaborate to develop a long-term agreement. So, um, Mr. Dolph and I worked on this, and with Amy and Mrs. York, Mr. Jorgensen, um, they both approved this the way it's written.
Anybody have any questions regarding the memorandum?
Is that what this is called, an MOU?
MOU, yes, it's an MOU.
Okay.
Sorry.
I make a motion that we approve the MOU between, uh, Emmett School, High School and PERTA.
Is there a second?
Bob?
I'll second that. But with the one caveat, is it is not Emmett High School, it's Emmett School District.
Okay.
There you go, sir.
Thank you.
No, it's, was the motion...
Oh, yeah. And the motion to approve Emmett School District and PERTA. Bob seconded. So, all those in favor say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Do you want to do a roll call, so I can abstain?
Oh, yes, let's back up a bit. Okay, why don't we start over with the motion?
Okay, I make a motion that the Emmett School District and PERTA, uh, the school board approves the memorandum of understanding between those two entities.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call vote. Jefferson?
Abstain.
Bob?
Aye.
Terry?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on. Approval or denial of service agreement with PERTA on middle school CTE instructor?
Madam Chair, um, per our discussion at the July twenty-fifth board meeting, um, both PERTA and Emmett School District felt that it would be best if the new wheel program and CTE instructor be employed by the Emmett School District. So, with Mr. Jorgensen and Ms. White, they walked through this agreement. Um, we switched everything from PERTA being responsible for the hiring and reporting of this, of the CTE instructor to the Emmett School District. And so, um, this agreement, again, Mr. Dolph and I and the two lawyers worked through. So, this is a one-year agreement with the idea that we'll work on a long-term agreement over the course of the year.
Questions, comments of service agreement between PERTA and the middle school CTE instructor?
What do you need?
We need to make a motion to approve the service agreement with PERTA on the middle school CTE instructor.
Are you hearing that, Bob?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve the professional service agreement, uh, between the middle school and Emmett School District to PERTA to hire the CTE instructor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Jefferson?
I'll abstain.
Bob?
Aye.
Sherry?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, H, approval or denial of superintendent lead request?
Madam Chair, I've been on the job seventeen days, and I need a vacation. Actually, no, I apologize. I had, uh, arranged a vacation back in, actually, the spring, and I just wanted to make sure per my contract that, uh, within five days, we need board approval. So, I'm asking for October twenty-fifth, um, which is a Friday, through November first, the following Friday off, so that's six, um, total days of vacation, so, no, I'm not hunking, I get to go to Cabo, so, if, if you approve. If not, my wife's going to Cabo alone.
You mean, make a motion to approve, deny the superintendent lead request?
Madam Chair, um, I'd make a motion to approve that request, and also just inform everybody that when we went through the interview process, that is something that Mr. Woods brought up, that if he were the one selected, that was something he let the board know would be something coming forward, so...
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, informational items.
Within, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. August professional development calendar.
Madam Chair, within your packet, I'm sorry, I didn't get it attached until late, you have just what we've been doing in August with our new staff and our current staff, um, our returning staff, and honestly, I just wanted you to be aware of it, so that if you have an opportunity to come down to, um, Emmett High School tomorrow during some of our sessions, or next Monday in our all-staff meeting, it would be wonderful. If you do want to have more than three there, please let me know, and we'll post it. But, uh, just some of the things that we're going through. Um, tomorrow, there's gonna be a large contingency at Emmett High School going through a number of sessions, so just wanted to just have that available, so if you have some time and want to come down and see what's going on, you're more than welcome.
That's Thursday.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, that's the Thursday, the fifteenth.
And then the nineteenth.
And then the nineteenth is our all-staff meeting in the morning. So, that, that's, whole calendar should be available as well. Any questions? Yes, great.
Oh, training's over at my building, over the elementary, just, we had a curriculum stuff, we moved it over to my building.
Okay. I'm so focused on my sessions, I'm not even thinking about the elementary right now.
Well, we have envisioned and, uh, and the, uh, journey's training. Friday's gonna be fun, too, because we've got the best research learning center coming out toward working in first grade, too, to work on the receipt, so, it's gonna be great trainings.
Is that tomorrow?
The receipt is Friday.
The receipt is Friday this week.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
I'm Madam Chair, Mr. Woods, the nineteenth all-staff meeting?
Mm-hmm.
I might have missed it on there. Uh, what, where is it and at what time?
Middle school.
It's at the middle school, starts at eight AM. There'll be eight AM till eleven. Um, there'll be itself, the insurance company, insurance will be talking as well. I have, I need my presentations from eight to nine-thirty, so, or somewhere in there, not quite that long, but, uh, we'll see. I'm, I had to cut it down, it was a three-hour presentation, I'm cutting it down, so, a lot of things to talk about.
Like Cabo's?
No, we're not, I already have some administrators back there going, why aren't we invited?
On that day, what's the district-wide training? At nine forty-five?
We actually changed that, um, that's calendar, so from nine forty-five to eleven will be the self-funded insurance, so it actually will be self-funded, they'll be insurance. And in the afternoon, Dr. Roberts, we have...
They, we returned to their building.
Thank you.
Is this in a line or...
It's as an extra. So, if you go into Board Book, there's a section where it says extras, where I always load all the extra documentation that we get at the meeting. It should, it, now it says agenda, packet, and extras on there, so if you click on extras, it's in that section. And I can show you if you need to.
Yeah, you wasn't there this morning, so...
No, I just, he gave it to me this evening, so I just did it.
Okay.
Normally, when they come here, I will do it in the next morning, um, but he had it already loaded, so I just moved it over since I'd already printed the packet.
Thank you.
I'm not, I'm not up to speed on Board Books. We use Board Docs, and so I want to get about three-way, three-quarters of the way through, and then I stop, and so it never, well, never gets all the way up there, so I apologize.
Okay, we'll train him. Any other questions on that?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Do we need to count if he's going to be there on the nineteenth?
The post?
I would, my belief, uh, Bob would be to go ahead and post that.
Okay, just want to make sure that we posted it.
Yes, thank you.
I'll be there.
Heather's writing that down. Okay, moving on. Uh, Black Canyon High School and Emmett High School, twenty-twenty graduation dates.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not sure if you can see that, but our, um, Black Canyon High School graduation date is Friday, May twenty-second, two thousand twenty at seven P M. And our Emmett High School is Saturday, May twenty-third, two thousand twenty at ten A M.
And that's tentative.
That goes to you?
That's tentative. They have not confirmed that yet.
They, as in?
I have a center.
Okay. Tentatively for both or just Emmett High School?
Just for Emmett High School.
Okay. Wow.
Maybe it's at the middle school again this year?
All right, moving on. Continuous improvement plan.
They might not be in the right order. Well, actually, this information is the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen continuous improvement plan that was, um, presented, I'm assuming, last fall. We'll be working on it for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Um, it is required that the board approve and then we will present it on our website by October one of this year. But, um, the, the plan is broke down into three specific areas. You have your continuous improvement plan, average college and career plan, and you also have your literacy, early literacy plan. So all the, the information is there, the data is there. This is something that we as a, as a board and as, and as a superintendent, you'll want to, this is where the evaluation piece will probably come in, um, especially once we set goals for me as a, as a superintendent for the year. So I just wanted to get this information out to you so you have it to kind of start looking through so that next month, when we present it and, and any changes in any of the, the information, we can, can give it an educated question or have an educated question towards their concern. Does that make sense?
We're going to have a work session on this, right?
You should have a work session on this. This is, this is important.
Yeah, it is. Thank you.
So there's a lot of information there. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay, moving on. Trustee election update.
Okay, where are we at? So Emmett School District, you again is, is a charter district and we, um, uh, we had to look at a few things with the appointment of the five trustees. Um, I did a review and I know, um, Ms. Vaughn has also looked into this. Um, we went to legal counsel. It is a requirement based on our charter and based on Idaho code, because our charter does supersede Idaho code. Before, that Idaho was established that the five appointed trustees will be up for election here in November. Um, if there are five, um, or more, actually, if there are six candidates running, there'll be an election. If there's five or less, there'll be, those, those will be appointed, there won't be an election. Then um, based on Jim County, they said that we will draw straws for the two or the three, four-year, um, terms and then the two, um, two-year terms. I understand. That's how we've done in the past. So there will be five board trustees up for election in November. And I have listed them, so.
Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and just to kind of clarify, I asked, um, Mr. Woods about this and I believe there's three charter districts in the state of Idaho. So this is a unique situation. Um, and so my question was, has this scenario come up before? And really, the short answer is each charter is written differently. Um, even if that has come up before, it's applied according to the charter. So.
Thank you.
Any comments, questions on that?
We got it resolved. That's good.
Yes, thank you for, uh, giving clarification because.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, just one point of clarification. The dates for filing for reelection or production is September sixth, is that correct?
August twenty-sixth through September sixth is the timeframe that you can turn in your app. So yes, five o'clock on September sixth is the deadline application to have it to me at the district office.
Another question that I have, I'm not too familiar with the sunshine law. Could somebody explain that?
I have a packet in the office that I can give you. If you need me to send it to you, I can. Um, I can't explain it too well, but it's basically says that any money you spend, you have to.
Report.
It report it.
Yep.
Based on what you spend for the election. So if you buy signs, you have to report it.
And it's generally if, I think, over a certain amount.
Correct.
Yes.
If it's under, I can't remember the amount, fifty or fifty bucks.
The info is also on our website too. So if you, there's the packet, the manuals on the website as well as the documentation you have to fill out. And I have it in the office too, if you guys, if anybody wants it, that doesn't want to look on the computer.
My other, my understanding was that if you didn't spend any money, you could send a letter, a declaration of that to the county clerk, is that correct?
I would have to look into that. I know you still have to do, um, prior to that, you still have to elect a treasurer. So there's still stuff that you would have to do with it, but I'm not sure about that. I can look into whether or not you can provide that letter if it's not, if nothing is spent. I can look into that and let everybody know.
Thank you.
Are you going to apply to be the bill reviewer, Bob?
I think that's a, that's a short straw.
I can fix that.
Bob, do you have any other questions?
No.
Anybody else?
No.
All right, thank you. Moving on. Trout Architects, Ola update.
Steve Trout, Trout Architects. Thanks for inviting me up. This isn't our final report and it's just, you have a decision to make. And I think Mr. Woods asked us to give us an opinion on the Ola school for this coming year, its viability as a safe harbor for students. I have sent an email to Mr. Woods explaining our position that we don't have a crystal ball, so we don't know what's going to happen with severe weather or earthquake or anything like that. But the building is deficient in its ability to withstand an earthquake relative to current code. We don't have any lateral bracing, which keeps the building from like falling over like a deck of cards. There's, we found dry rot around some areas along the top of the foundation, in the floor joists and in the walls on top of that. Now, when I say that, we do have some ideas on how to fix that and that'll be coming forward. But this is just for what you need to do now to make your plans for this semester. Uh, and the walls are tied to the foundation. So it's kind of like sitting there, nice and pretty, and the roof isn't really tied to the walls on top per current code. Nineteen-ten, built perfectly. That's how we do it. But right now, it's not how, how we would build today to current code. Personally, I don't think the building, we're going to lose the building if we do have a major earthquake event and we're in a high seismic activity zone uh, relative to down here and up, uh, over towards Boise. It's a lot lighter zone that way, even with the Boise front. Um, if there was an, an event and the building came loose, I don't see it collapsing like tragically falling into rubble. But if we did have students in there or others, they would have a hard time getting out because all the doors are going to be wet shut. So it would be quite frightening, I think, let alone having an earthquake that we hardly ever get. So that, that's, that's our opinion. Uh, I think we can fix the building, but it's going to take us time to get there. I think I explained my letter, my Mr. Woods.
You did. Uh, my, my concern was I, I wanted to make sure we're safe for students and, and at this point, you told me that you don't, you don't feel comfortable signing off on that, is that correct?
I, if, um, uh, the answer is no. I was trying to come up with a joke about playing the lottery, but.
Right.
No. Um, we just, we just can't predict the future. And, and that's where this rests. If we knew what was coming up, we had good earthquake scientific data or something like that, that could be a different story, but we're not there yet in our society.
So the rest of your assessment will be, I, I read your email. Um, it'll be like a week out or?
Yeah, yeah, we're just, we just missed this meeting by a little bit. And in the, in the rest of the assessment, we're going to talk about how we can restore the building, how, how we can bring it up for accessibility uh, and project some costs on what that might be to preserve the building, but make it a viable modern building. And still retain the historic character.
Are you going to include a timeframe? I mean, do we need a year to do this or months or weeks or?
Uh, as far as construction?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, I'll put something on there.
Okay.
I won't ballpark it for you right now.
Thank you.
I know the, um, when we received the email and, and Mr. Joyner, principal, contacted Mrs. Davis, the teacher, um, that the Ola community centers agreed to have the s- school down there. Um, I know that I guess we'll just have to wait on your assessment of a timeline of when they could possibly go back, but in my, is it, would it be that you'd have to completely redo the, your job before they go in or would they, would, could it be where they do a?
Phase.
Yeah, phase.
Probably won't be phased, just mainly because the school is so small.
Okay.
Uh, might not be economically feasible. Once we get into it, uh, it's not going to take long because there's, there isn't that much there to work on compared to some of your other buildings. But it would take this, probably take a summer, uh, but we would have to get started the day after school let out to get down. It's kind of head like.
But if the building's empty, you could start maybe in March or April.
Yeah, 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 as soon as we can get to it. And we're not dependent on frozen ground, so.
Okay.
Issues, so.
Could you suggest that everything, um, in the school be moved out or can some things be left in there where the teacher could go up and retrieve things between, uh, depending on?
Oh, you mean for the winter? For, yeah, I would kind of think use it without the students.
So that she could, I don't want to speak for Mrs. Davis, but so that she could, um, go collect stuff if she's teaching this thing, this, she can go up and get her stuff, take it down and so that we don't have to transfer everything down to the.
Yeah, I, I think the building is viable for teachers, uh, but again,
No kids.
It's not the safest thing in the world, but kids, I would be more, more concerned about kids.
So. Am I hearing that, um, that it wouldn't even be able to be started on until next summer?
No, I'm going to back up and go with Mr. Peter. And so it's, so if we come to a plan, come to a solution, if no one's in the school and we don't have any snow.
You can start a simple puzzle?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, we have some concrete and materials and stuff like that that will play into that scenario.
But that can, that can be an adverse weather event up there and not down here.
That's right.
That's right.
So with that in mind, I mean.
The better.
Yeah, yeah. Not unusual in life.
Anybody read the farmer's almanac for this?
No, but that's one of the things we look into.
The squirrels are having a heavy coat. Does that mean anything?
I think I would put the nuts away.
So I also have another question. I'm sorry. Will that, will the building after it is fixed still remain on the historic register?
Yes. Well, I'm going to say yes. I mean, that's, that's, that's our whole goal. Well, not the whole goal. Whole goal is to make a modern school. Second issue, keep it on the historic register. And we've never heard of anything taken off the historic register.
We don't want to be the first.
We don't want to be.
Any, any more questions, Mr. Trout?
I think that you have answered most of the ability to use it so that we don't have to remove everything out of the building.
Yeah, once we start construction, you might want to have more stuff out.
Right. But before that, we were okay to do a real fast move here in two days.
Yeah.
And then we don't have to remove everything.
Yeah, um.
Thank you for, for coming and presenting. It was nice meeting you.
Nice spending your week. We'll have something shortly.
I, well, Madam Chair, I think we're going to probably have to have a special board meeting, um, once we, if we still have some, uh, questions that need to be answered logistically with the community center lease agreement, um, uh, insurance and things. So I'm hoping to have some solid information by Friday at the latest, but, uh, I know we're, we're on a time crunch here, so just be ready.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, policy. And we, uh, Mr. Woods and Shauna, we talked this over. We're going to postpone these two to September. So board member input for future agenda items. Do you have any topics?
I'd like to put together, um, calendar of workshops over there in maybe the next six months or something like that, uh, so that we can have an idea of, uh, input.
Jefferson, do you have anything?
Not at this moment.
Bob, do you have anything for future agenda items?
No, not at this time.
Okay, anything else down here?
No.
All right, we need a motion to adjourn, please.
I will make.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Bob.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thanks for being here, Bob.
Yes, thank you.
Hope you're feeling good.
I'm feeling fine.
Well, if you're feeling fine, you should have been here.
Please, does anybody have some notes for me? And I need you to find that they're all kind of bunched. One, two.